Yeah. Okay. We're coming really close to calling this meeting to order. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. I recognize that all councilors are present as Councilor Copeland approaches the dais. We're also accompanied by the city administrator, Mr. Sutherland, and the deputy city clerk, Mr. Rankin. If you would all please join the city council in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So a couple of housekeeping matters. First of all, I want to recognize the excellent work of our new director of planning and economic development. We now have 100% of all of the TIF district amendments approved by the city council, approved by the commissioner of the Department of Economic and Community Development. I think that was quite a task, and we want to thank her for her expertise in dealing with that complex area of state regulation. The second is a resolution. So whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 6th, entitled National Lights Out, and that the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in Saco to join with 38 million neighbors across approximately 16,000 communities in all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. Whereas the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and the network, excuse me, neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas neighbors in Saco assist the Saco Police Department through joint community building efforts and support National Nights Out 2019, whereas it is essential that all neighbors of Saco come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now therefore I, Marston D. Lovell, mayor, do hereby call upon all neighbors of Saco to join the city of Saco, the Saco Police Department, and the National Association of Town Watch in support for the National Night Out of Tuesday, August 6th, 2019. Further, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Marston D. Lovell, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, as National Night Out in Saco. So there's that resolution. And next is public comment, and we have four individuals who have signed up. So Ms. Coleman, if you would come forward and state your name.
I'm Kristina John-Harkins.
Okay, so Mr. Harkins, if you would please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Been here before, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Harkins, 4 Christopher Terrace. Over a year ago, we were told that we would receive substantial savings in our accounting procedures if we went to paychecks. After a year, this community has endured and cumbered a tremendous amount of costs in staff time and dollars for a system that's not working properly. I wish the council would look into this now, rather than spending three or four years trying to get this squared away. As the problem with the senior citizen program, it's taken four years to bring it to where it is now. The search firms, that's fine. There are national firms that do this all the time. There are public organizations and national county and city management association that assist in advertising, in providing people who have retired, seasoned professional people who can come in on an interim basis to help the community through a transition period. They're called circuit riders. There's no need to rush into this process. Everything seems to be a rush, 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 and it leads to errors. There's going to be a new council coming in the fall? Keep this in consideration, please. I think we need a charter commission, not an ad lib process of changing things. There are model charters out there that would serve this community very well, again, provided by professional organizations, as a National League of Cities. The transit lease, both the Transit Authority and the Main Street Group received substantial increases this year in their budgets. I don't know of any organization that has a lease that doesn't pay for their own electricity, trash removal, or other amenities, excuse me for my voice. I think we should take a look at that before we jump. As a point of reference here, there's been some communication and criticism about the Saco citizens for municipal government. Just for the record, we were opposed to having the preschool program situated in the industrial park, and that was communicated to the school superintendent. Has our budget this year been adopted, not adopted, published in the newspaper or on the website? I haven't seen it. May have overlooked it. I have a couple of other things on my plate, other than following municipal activities. We're into the new year, two weeks. We already spent appropriated $250,000-plus dollars for out of surplus. Now we're back here. Excuse me.
No, just wrap it up, please.
Now we're in here for another $300,000, which would leave us down around, I believe, $297,000 left. Two weeks into the year. We're planning to spend that money, too, to bring it down to the 10%. What is going on in this community? Money. We've had a big surplus again, and nothing is ever to the benefit of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman, are you ready now?
Yes.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue. Three items. Item number one, I approached the city administrator, as I did, about the senior program, about issues with wages for salary individuals here in this community, our department heads, and anyone who gets a salary. I stated that I did not believe it was being correctly calculated. I stated this four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, and I was promised with the mayor present that Mr. Sutherland would sit down with me and go through this process so he would understand what I was trying to point out. I believe there are some individuals that have not been paid correctly their salary, nor their fringe benefits that go along with it. And if this has been taking place for as many years as I believe it has, there is an impact to these employees. I actually did have an employee give me permission to go over his financial records, his payroll, the authority to the city administrator, except that individual has now retired. So anyone who is a department head who has been a long-term and would like some assistance to see that we can look at this and make sure that's rectified, please reach out to the city administrator and please send me a personal email to BColeman@MaineSaco, sorry, BColeman@Maine.RR.com, and Coleman without an E. I will then proceed forward again to see what we can do. Second, took me a year to figure out this paycheck flex in the comment made by our finance director. The comment was made that there was issues with the deduction codes in Munis. I kept saying, what's the errors? Somebody else added some deduction codes. Now, knowing how Munis was originally set up, and there was an error on the school side on one particular deduction code, it took a lot of work to just fix that one. It was because it was pre-taxed and should have been post-taxed, which meant they should have been charged if I care Medicare. Well, the problem may be, and I'm going to foyer a list from paychecks, Munis, the school department, to see how the various deduction codes are set up, if they're pre-taxed or post-taxed. It could be possible that a health insurance program that is being deducted by an employee that was under Munis was being subject to FICR Medicare and should not have been. But I can't prove that until I have some documentation. And then again, I'm going to need someone from the city who lived during those periods of time to let forth a document so we can go through and see if it's calculated right. I can do it by hand, the calculation. We're not going to be able to take care of the state and federal taxes. They were taken, they got them back. We're worried about the Medicare and FICR, because if it impacted them, it impacted the city, which means there may be a refund. When I did my project, it was $5,000 just for one deduction for one year. One individual received $131 back, and that's a school teacher who doesn't have the FICR side. So there could be some issues there. And the senior program, I suspect as of today, has not been solved. Am I going to get a response?
It's public comment.
I know it's public comment. Public comment is, when you don't do something after a certain time, worry about what may be coming next, because it's not going to be good. It will be costly to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I started the clock late. Yeah, she could come back up, speak for another minute. And next up is former councillor Roach. Mr. Roach, if you would come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, long time no see, guys.
Hey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. First off, the dredge has given us a lot more beach down there than it's been very crowded down there last week, two weeks. So the citizens thank government for getting that dredge after 25 years to get some sand back on the beach. It's a Band-Aid, but we'll take it. I want to tell you a little secret, just between us, all right? Just between us. Some property owners there, down there at the beach, want to pay more in taxes. All right, just keep it to yourselves. But houses that should be valued on Camp Ellis on the shoreline higher are sometimes well under $500,000, yet Bitterford Pool, Hills Beach, the starting price is 500. Kenny Shores, even when they are our community, Kenny Shores is more. Got the same sea level rise, got the same climate change debate, the same ocean. So why? Because the Army Corps jetty, and what that jetty does to that section of the beach, we have not only lost homes to the sea, but we have also missed out on current valuation increases that other communities see, and increases from the confidence to build new homes. The tax loss to Saco is easily seven figures annually, and only due to grow more. Yet most homeowners will gladly pay more taxes if the Army Corps does what it's legally supposed to do. And our citizens deserve the city and regional approach and state their support if they decide to take legal action against the Army Corps. City already pays 250K extra down there. That's why I left it on when I was on council, but it's probably even a little more than that, to protect the beach, repair the roads, the infrastructure. It is time we put these extra funds to a more long-lasting solution. Residents all on our beaches pay 15% of our residential taxes with little school or city service costs from the city beyond the Army Corps problems. I say residential because all of our commercial taxes, including a $4 million assessment increase at Atlantic Heights last year, are shared throughout the city to lessen our residential tax burden. And we also share, as a community, the beaches and the river. But despite this, you know, push for commercial taxes, the revenue did fall, the commercial tax revenue did fall for about the 10th or 15th year straight, down to 462 million. Only 22% of our tax revenue was commercial. However, there is good news, because this was the lowest decrease in the last 10, I think it only decreased like a million dollars. And I think when fiscal year 19 report comes out, let's see if that's now finally on the increase, thanks to our staff in the Economic Development Department. Again, growing the commercial tax base is answers. Growing valuations of resources that we utilize on the beaches should be a priority. This is not a zero-sum game. This is a win for everyone with support of our beachfront residents. And don't forget that our industrial parks are there for commercial value to help pay for our city services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to put the consent agenda on the floor? I have a motion to put the consent agenda up for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion has been made by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Minton. Put the consent agenda on the floor. Is there any item in the consent agenda that a councillor would like to see removed? To my right, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see item B and item F removed.
Item B and item F are now going to be part of the agenda. Any to my left, councillor Minton.
Item A, we're pushing back to the 8/12 meeting, I believe.
Okay. So I think I said that during the workshop, so I'm just pulling that completely, rather than removing it for discussion in the regular agenda. Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? To my right, or to my left, saying none. So what remains is the budget amendment number one, budget amendment number two, the shuttlebus Zoom Saco Main Street leases, the confirmation of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board member appointments, and the approval of the minutes of July 1st. So that being said, councillor Archer. Councillor Gay.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Yes.
Councillor Copeland.
Yes.
Councillor Minton.
Yes.
Councillor Smart.
Yes.
And councillor Johnston.
Yes.
The consent agenda as amended passes 7-0. So the first thing up on the agenda, item B, adoption of a sign, digital sign use policy. Councillor Johnston.
Purpose of the digital sign use policy is to establish specific guidelines to regulate messaging on city-owned digital signs. Previously, there was no policy regulating the content communicated on the city-owned signs. Therefore, there has been inconsistencies among departments regarding which message has been advertised. A policy must be adopted to avoid future discrepancies. The city council moves to adopt the digital sign use policy dated July 15, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion has been made by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Minton to accept the digital sign policy. This only requires a single vote, as it is a policy. So any comments associated with this policy? To my left, councillor Copeland.
I move that we accept it with the edits and adjustments made during workshop.
That's fine. And Ms. Roy, so you understand those, and you're capable of making those adjustments?
She forwarded them on to.
And she's already forwarded them to the city administrator?
And council.
Oh, and council, okay. Excuse me, I'm not carrying my email on me. Or I am, but I'm not looking at it. So any other comments to my left? Councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to pull the item and defer it to the next meeting due to the changes that were requested, and I'd like to see those changes. And although it was emailed to us right now, we're in the middle of a meeting, and we don't have the ability to look at that, or at least I don't have the ability to look at that now and digest it, and then come back and make a vote. So there's no harm in pushing this off to the August meeting, considering we've asked for a pilot policy for the past two and a half years. We've asked for a payment in lieu of taxes, that's what pilot stands for, for anyone unaware. We've asked for that policy. We've asked to see a number of things come back before us. So I think having this wait a little while until we all see it, and see the updates, and see the final draft, I don't think is out of the realm of...
Is that a motion?
Yes.
You already have a motion on the floor.
This is a motion to table. So I have a motion to table from councillor Doyle. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so I have a...
Gay?
Yes, that's right. But I need to get my sheet back out again. So I have a motion by councillor Doyle, seconded by councillor Gay, to table. Councillor Johnston?
No.
Councillor Smart?
No.
Councillor Minton?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Doyle?
Yes.
Councillor Gay?
Yes.
And councillor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to table passes 5-2. This is table till August 12th for the distribution of the modified policy. So the next item up is item F, which is... The approval of the search firm.
So I'm the council resource.
I'll take it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Lovell has contacted multiple firms to aid in the search for a new city administrator. The data attached with results of the search, be it ordered, the city council authorized the mayor enter into an agreement with a third party to aid in the search for a new city administrator. I move to approve the order.
So do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
So I have a motion made by councillor Minton and seconded by councillor Johnston to permit the mayor, me, to discuss engagement to a couple of different search firms, as discussed during workshop, and make an effort then to get the process going where a selected search firm comes before the council and discusses what the council wishes to see in a city administrator. Are there any comments on the left? Councillor Minton, and then councillor Smart.
I would like to expand the motion to include a non-RKO-based audit of the city, as well as a human resources audit. With a small, two-person HR department, I think it's unrealistic to expect, with all the different personnel things going on, that they be tasked with conducting such an audit. And I think both of those items are heavy contributors into the competencies and skills we would be looking for based on their outcome in a new city administrator.
Okay, so we're looking at a, two audits. It's an HR audit that you bring up, and then also an audit of...
Just a citywide audit, financial audit.
Non-financial or financial?
Financial of everything. I mean, we've sat here, I don't know for how long, and heard of all these things that didn't make the threshold by RKO, again and again and again. And I would like to have someone else come in, since we're in a period of transition, and look at the books and go through them completely separate.
All right, and that would not be, perhaps the HR audit could be associated with the search firm, I'd have to ask. But the financial audit would not be? So I would end up coming back to the council with a recommendation, so she would say three accounting firms that would be willing to do that?
I think we could ask them to expand their proposed documents currently to those other components.
Okay, all right. I think it's out of their bailiwick, so they may come back as a no-bid, but I certainly can do that.
I'm sure, yeah. Eaton could utilize the sister, a sister firm or something, possibly.
Yeah, to my knowledge, they don't have an in-house accounting company, but...
Yeah, we'll do it as a separate motion.
Yeah. So that's, so you're looking to amend the main motion to add both a HR audit, a human resources audit, and a financial audit that... How would it be differentiated from the RKO audit?
I think we've had four years of RKO coming through and telling us things, and then we're finding errors after the fact. And I think we need to have someone else come in, and obviously, the transition, as you have one city administrator depart and a new one join, is the perfect time to have that audit of the city's finances and determine what's going on and why we continue to have these hiccups with RKO.
Right.
So if that needs to be a separate motion...
I know, I think it's, I think we can make it amendment to this.
Yep.
Although I would be more comfortable as a separate motion, but we don't have anything prepared right now for that. So I have an amendment for two audits, to get quotes, to accomplish two audits.
As a basis for the search for the city administrator.
Or associated with the search for the city administrator. Do I have a second on this amendment?
Second.
So I have an amendment made by councillor Minton and seconded by councillor Doyle that would add a financial audit and a human resources audit to be associated with the search for a city administrator. Any comments on this amendment? To my left, councillor, excuse me, councillor Smart.
Although it's not specific to this amendment, I just wanted to point out what I pointed out in the workshop today, that because a subdivision of my firm is involved, is one of the potential firms to be hired, I'm not going to be taking part in the vote, and that includes for this amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments to my left? Any comments to my right, councillor Archer?
Just a motion to divide the two firms, the two different types of audits.
Oh, you want to divide them?
I don't want them to get clumped.
Yeah. So I have a motion that puts them together. You can't, this isn't amendment.
Go on the amendment.
So I would have to ask that the original amendment be withdrawn, including its second, so a new amendment could be made that would separate them, or I put it up as the two together. So do I have a withdrawal of the initial amendment, councillor Minton?
Mr. Mayor, if we're amending the agreement...
Yes.
...to authorize you to enter into an agreement with a third party for three different things... things...
Yeah.
...we can just amend it to authorize you to enter into agreements as necessary with third parties to aid in the search of the city administrator, conducting a financial audit and a human resources audit of the city of Saco.
You do not want to split that. You want to keep them together.
We can keep it all in the one amendment, but if you have to go in a second direction, it would allow you to do so.
It allows me to, you're right. So, I can contact...
It allows you that flexibility.
Some of the very able public accounting firms that do municipalities. It's just, RKO is so common around here, anyway.
I know.
Okay, so the answer is no. Any other comments to my right? Any comments to my left?
Is that acceptable? Councilman Archer?
No, it's still good. I'm separating the financial audit.
Excuse me, I'd like to get back to the meeting and just say, let's vote on this amendment and see where we're going to go. So, Councilor Johnston?
No.
Councilor Smart?
I'm recusing myself from this.
You're recusing yourself, okay. So, I've got an aye and a recusal. Councilor Mintorn? I'm sorry.
You have a no.
A no, and...
A recusal and a yea.
And a yea, okay. Councilor Copeland?
No.
And that's a two on those. Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Two and two. Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Three and two. Councilor Archer?
Goes to you now.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
I would say I'm going to go against the amendment and go with no. And that doesn't mean that another amendment now can't be made that separates the two. So, the vote is three or four opposed?
Four, three.
Three in favor and...
One abstention.
One abstention.
So, I would like to make an amendment...
Yes, sir.
...that will authorize the mayor to enter into agreements with multiple third parties to aid in the search for a new city administrator, comma...
Yes.
...human resources audit, comma...
Yes.
...and financial audit, period.
Same motion.
It seems as if that's the same motion. Could you make a separate motion that just adds financial, and then when that's voted on, add another motion that adds HR?
It wasn't the same motion because it gave you multiple parties. So, you can go in two different directions that way.
I think we're, yes, that's right, but I think we're parsing it too finely if you make a motion only on the financial, because it may well be that you would prevail on the financial but not on the HR. I don't know. But what I'm saying is, if you make them as separate motions, you may find that they both prevail, and therefore, it's the same thing.
All right.
Or one of them doesn't.
Okay, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with a third party to conduct a financial services audit of the city.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Mintorn, seconded by Councilor Doyle, to amend the motion on the search firm to also seek a firm for a financial audit of the city, other than the routine audit that's done annually.
Correct.
So, any comments on that to my left? Councilor Copeland?
Just a question on how much does that cost?
That's what I'm going to be coming back to the council on. I'll have three, again, I'll have at least three companies, and I'll have numbers.
How much do we pay RKO now?
What is our annual audit cost now? Twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four? Twenty-four grand? Twenty-four thousand dollars? American?
American.
Or one Bitcoin, depending on the day.
Shouldn't have sold all of them.
Sold early.
I did.
So, Councilor Johnston, please help me.
My concern here is that we're now branching off into a whole other area when our main focus should be securing some kind of consultant for the city administrator. I'm not opposed, per se, of going in this direction, but perhaps we can put this off, and you can come back with quotes. Because the idea of giving you an open-ended checkbook to just, I mean, tonight we'd be voting, authorizing you to spend whatever, and I'm not really comfortable with that.
I would hope not.
And I would suspect that you would be coming back to council anyway.
I would come back, but you're right. I mean, we should, this should be revisited on the 12th with some quotes or something.
That's what I would prefer.
Yeah. Any other comments to my left?
I'll withdraw the amendment, but again, I believe we're putting the cart before the horse, because we should be laying the foundation for what the competency should be centered around, not going out with the competencies that we came up with before, which were specific to the current city administrator, and not with the overall picture of the city's condition.
I understand, but once you get a presentation by the search firm on their efforts to identify what the council is looking for, it may well be that that will clarify that for you. So, anyway, so...
I'll withdraw the amendment.
The motion's withdrawn. You're withdrawing your second, Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Okay, do you have another amendment? Do you wish to make the HR amendment? No?
No.
Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to allow me to identify or contact a search firm and further update the council as to their pool of interim managers and how fixed their dollars are. And I forgot my other note. It's in a file folder already. So, that's the motion on the floor. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Abstain.
Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-1-1. Five in favor, one opposed, with one abstention. And the mayor doesn't vote this time. Okay, so that's, we're finally through the consent agenda. It's just quarter of nine. So, getting to the regular agenda, item, flipping to item A. Item A, Councilor Doyle, you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
L.A. Chamberlain applicant had requested a contract zone amendment to add the uses of offices of contractors and tradesmen and contractors to the Park North Contract Zone Agreement by and between Park North Development LLC and Preston Properties LLC and the city of Saco dated December 20, 2005, amended through October 17, 2016. At their meeting on March 19, 2019, the planning board reviewed the contract zone amendment request and forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council for the following. Add offices of contractors and tradesmen as a permitted use to parcel two of the Park North Contract Zone. Add contractors as a conditional use to parcel two of the Park North Contract Zone. Planning Board has forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Doyle and seconded by Councilor Gay to open the public hearing. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing on Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Oh, a vote. Councilor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Oh, seven, zero. Motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to come forward to speak to Park North Contract Zone Amendment Request to add two uses? Come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
John Harkins, for Christopher Terrace. Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Last couple of years, there's been controversy around this developer. The promises made to this community about completing certain caveats to the projects, have they been completed? I don't expect that answer, but if not, then I would go slow. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that the council has had similar questions, and Mr. Sommer is not in the audience. Oh, here he is. So, any other comments? Yes, sir, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Oh, that's okay. Name and address?
Name and address.
Kevin Bedard, to Quarry Lane, Saco.
Yes, sir.
I just think it'd be a great idea. As a contractor in the local area, most of my business is focused in Saco and the Scarborough area, and we have quite a bit of equipment, looking for space, with a little bit of office space, and I think it'd be handy.
Right. You're speaking favorably for making these amendments.
Correct.
Good. Anything else, sir?
That is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue. As I pointed out, I don't know how many weeks ago, based on the chart, Mr. Chamberlain is still two-thirds not in completion. There's only one column that has some marks in it. The middle has a lot of marks, and the end has a lot of marks. So, why would we continue to add things to any contract zone for this developer until we see some more of those marks move into the completed section of the chart? Because you keep giving, 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 and they take, 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 which includes the subdivisions that are going to be next. So, at what point do you stop someone? If council doesn't stop now, this is going to come back in two more years for something else, and we're still going to look at a chart that's probably not even half-completed. So, council, please step up, represent the city, and say, no, until I see some progress, no further action until X is done. Make it a condition before you move forward. It's time. This has been before the council how many times since 2005? And also, you're talking two contract zones and parcels that were so large to begin with that should never have ever made contract zones that big. I don't think that was the intent of contract zones, to be so large? Because most of the ones that we talk about nowadays is pretty finite in size, isn't it? And this parcel, I don't know how many acreages it is. Do not have that data, but it's a lot of acreage, I'm thinking. And I don't think there's any other contract zone in Saco that even compares to the acreage. I bet you all our others only probably equal half of what is out there. Would I be correct? Because someone's smiling, so I kind of have an idea that I'm within the ballpark of my thinking. So, please, step forward and say, no. Make them wait until you see progress made. It's important, because if you don't set the boundaries now, you're never going to set, no one's going to ever set the boundaries. It's going to fall in the next council, council after, and council afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to step forward? Yes, sir, please step forward and state your name and address to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Stanley Brown, 85 Waldun's Way, Old Orchard. I'd like to speak in favor of the change.
Sure.
I'm currently looking for a facility that I can open a small welding business, furniture, whatever, equipment repair, and it's a good location. I think it's off the road a little ways. I think there's not a lot of other properties out there, so I just thought I'd come and speak in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please step forward. State your name and address for the record into the microphone.
My name is Chris Bolvi, 156 Milligan Mills Road, Saco. I'm currently speaking in favor of this. I think that's a great, good idea to get businesses into that park over there, and I'm looking at this, thinking it's a good idea.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to this matter? Does anyone else wish to speak to this matter? Councilor Doyle, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading of Park North Contract Zone Amendment Request to add two uses on August 12, 2019.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Gay, to close the contract, I mean, to close the public hearing and to set a final reading date. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Copeland?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask some questions on this?
Yeah.
And maybe the planning department will know. Have any neighbors objected during the planning process? And are any neighbors objecting here to this, to having this construction lot? So, there's, I'd like to know what the people have said.
So, Ms. Prescott, do you have any kind of familiarity in terms of the neighbor's response to this amendment?
No one objected during the planning board process, and I don't believe anyone spoke at the planning board public hearing on this matter either, from the public.
Letters sent in or anything?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So, there's been no objection from the public at all?
No.
Right. Well, letters were sent out to the abutters and so forth?
Yes, it would have been up to her. I'm an assistant to send letters out to all the abutters at the time.
If I may point out, part of the problem with this is the way we actually notice people, because you're not noticing every single parcel owner in the subdivision. You're doing the 200 feet, 300 feet, whatever it is requirement. So, as we've seen previously, I know myself and the mayor, at least on one occasion, have had members of the Cascade Falls Apartments that have come to speak, not very favorably about this, or not this specific, but other issues in the subdivision. So, your question is a good one, but again, the way we notice is inadequate, in my opinion. I think we need to address that going forward.
Well, we did notice this public hearing.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Within however many, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's generally a several hundred feet radius. We're not noticing, I mean, you're talking about several hundred acres of a project. So, someone that may be affected that's up in the right-hand corner won't get noticed.
What about that, I'm thinking about the community on that street down to the left.
Yeah, I agree. I haven't drawn the line and figured out the...
I would have to check to see, excuse me, I would have to check to see the list that was noticed. It's usually within 600 feet or within 200 feet of the property, depending on what the requirement is of the zone. So, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to provide it.
So, we will need that on August 12 for the final reading, because that's the point where we would be doing a final vote and amending if we amend and so forth.
So, if I can just put it out there in open air that it concerns me about the neighbors, that maybe there's some fencing and some plantings that could make it a little bit less construction-looking for the residential neighbors. Just saying.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
We are undergoing the zoning ordinance revision, so we would love your input on the notice requirements and your concerns on that, so we can make the updates while we go through the process. So, thank you.
Excellent.
And Councilor Johnston, have you made any comments in the zoning ordinance review about that notification range?
Still going through that.
It's still going through now.
Yeah, it's on my list of things that need to be addressed.
Okay. So, the motion right on the floor is to close the public hearing. Any other comments associated with that?
I think it's a point well taken that we need to make sure that commitments are met, and I was wondering if the city administrator or the city planner has a list of outstanding punch list items around the city for this builder?
Punch list around the city?
Well, like the, you know...
For the developer?
Right.
There was a sheet of paper that was provided for the June 17 workshop or meeting that had four items to be done, and...
Are they done?
Those are in...
Are they done?
Those are in varying degrees of completion at this point. We are working closely with the developer to make sure that these are achieved.
I believe Mr. Sommer also has spoken to that during a workshop.
He did.
Yes.
Right about promises made.
But he spoke of what the status was of those four items.
Well, there's four different items that need to be talked about. One is the land, and we are working with him to convey it. There is the TMP, that sunset, and we're working to establish and get another one in place. Other items, public sidewalk, I don't know the answer to that one. And something about design of public works. I have no idea what that means. Designated or designed to satisfaction of public works. Oh, construction of the public works, or public sidewalk.
Yeah, no, there's the sidewalk.
It's tied to the same item.
I thought there was a field in there. Do you remember that, Councilor Johnston? No? Okay.
Different subdivision.
Different subdivision.
If I may speak to the parcels. The Saco A and B parcels that were listed on the plan, I have received the draft deeds on that. So, it's just a matter of moving that through the final legal processes. The developer has already submitted the TMP application and has been following through on that. So, we've been -- the city has been in the process of that as well, as far as offering peer review comments from our side. The trail plan was submitted and provided to council in November. It was not done on the original date for completion, but the applicant Elliot Chamberlain has been doing the trail. I think last time he spoke that it was about 70% complete, but he could be asked as well. The initial planning board approval we reviewed was completed within that required timeline. Sewer availability is being followed up on. And the sidewalk is the remaining item. One of the recommendations we had previously made was that the dates be reviewed for the conditions to extend them appropriately. That was a recommendation made in November 2018. But for now, that's where the compliance is. Thank you.
Would our parks director be able to speak to the trails over there?
The trails on Waterfall Drive? For us, we walked them, got it early spring. They were still pretty soft and stuff like that. For us, if we took on the trails, they would have to connect to Cascade Falls through the second possible waterfall drives, realizing some of it would be on the road on the sidewalk to get over there. If it just sits in the neighborhood, it's just a glorified neighborhood trail system that doesn't get very far and doesn't do a whole lot for us connectivity and stuff like that. But if we had interest in connecting it to Cascade Falls and connectivity in that way, it'd be perfect.
So, the motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to speak to your motion?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Copeland, for bringing Mr. Sommer down. I have a question. Although it doesn't pertain to this development, where are we with the Ross Ridge Field?
So, Ross Ridge Field, we looked at it three weeks ago or two weeks ago. You know, the grass is coming in. It's roughly grass that you see in a medium strip or something like that that isn't properly fertilized and so forth. It is still his land and still Elliot's land until September, early September, I think. Ross Ridge, you still have ownership of it until early September?
We still have -- well, we still have ownership until the city takes it over.
Right. And so, you know, again, my recommendation, I left a message, was to put a shot of fertilizer on and so forth. It's coming in. It's not anything that's going to be the homeowners, like their front yard, because it's not irrigated and stuff like that. But, you know, we'll take ownership of it pending right now. It has a good shot of fertilizer to it once or two. You know, it won't be bad, but it won't be like -- it won't be a -- no, it's always just going to be an open space, green space. As far as I understood, that land is just going to be open space.
When are we due to take that over?
First of September.
First of September. Thank you. Well, once it's -- I think Mr. Chamberlain has said.
Once it's adequate for us. But that'd be the one-year growing period.
And that was going to be my follow-up question. Is it up to Parks and Rec specification or standards now? Which is what the agreement was.
You know, for me to say yes and no to it, he would have to, you know, and I'll say this as we spoke and I left a message, I would recommend strongly that he puts fertilizer on it and puts a good -- put a summer guard fertilizer and then one that would strengthen the root system. Because once you open it up to the general public, if it doesn't have a good root system, you're just catching -- you're just chasing the beast at that point to try to keep it going. So, you know, again, if he would have been smart, you know, hopefully he does, put no kids on the fields, even though it's tough, you know, you still have a proper one-year growing period. We do that with all our fields, all our playing fields, is to try to keep people off it for a year. Because if the root system's not into it, you know, they go out there in a day, kick the dirt around, and next thing you know, you have a dirt patch.
And we talked about this before, where the held-back money is somewhere roughly around $11,000, and it's not enough to cover. Am I right? To cover it to get up to city standards?
Correct. You know, with the -- I would tell you, with the $11,000, you know, with the equipment that we've purchased in the spring or in the summer, you know, with the air raid and stuff like that, that gets us closer. Because now we have the equipment to kind of combat it a little bit. But it definitely needs some fertilizer.
Thank you. So, thank you. So, any other comments on the motion to close the public hearing?
No.
So, Councilor Archer?
Hi.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
So, Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing on Item A of the agenda passes 7-0. Item B, Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council had asked at the November 13, 2018 workshop that the eight amendments to the Park North/Casade overall subdivision previously approved by the planning board be brought to the city council for review. The following is a description of the planning board's approved amendments to the Park North/Casade overall subdivision, which altered the original subdivision plan incorporated by reference into the Park North and Cascade contract zones. First Amendment, Cascade Contract Zone, Division of Lot C1 resulting in the creation of Lot C5 at the corner of Cascade Road and Route 1, approved 1/22/2008. Second Amendment, Cascade Contract Zone, Further Division of Lot C1 resulting in the creation of Lot C6, approved 1/20/2009. Applicant Wagner Drywall received site plan approval for the commercial building that now houses a daycare and other uses. Third Amendment, Cascade Contract Zone, Creation of Lots C4A, C4B, and 22. The latter was carved out of an existing Lot 18 at the corner of Portland Road and Main Road, now Waterfall Drive, and is now occupied by the former Ocean Communities Credit Union Building. Lots C4A and C4B were created from the existing parcel that lies between Cascade Road and old Cascade Road. It is described in the parcel deed for the Cascade Inn as a separate parcel from the larger former Inn property. Zones C4A and C4B have since been developed with single-family dwellings. Fourth Amendment, Cascade Contract Zone, Easements associated with the force main and the pump station for lots C1, C5, and C6 were created. Fifth Amendment, Park North Contract Zone, Updating Dimensional Regulations in Parcells 2, 3, and 4 of the Contract Zone Agreement. The space and bulk regulations in Parcel 4 necessitate a change to the subdivision plan for Parcel 4. Sixth Amendment, Park North Contract Zone, Modified the Residential Area of Lot 18. Seventh Amendment, Park North Contract Zone, The first part proposes to alter Phases 3 and 5 within the residential portion of the development, which will consist of consolidating the proposed right-of-way of Bear's Den Road, not currently built, the previously proposed open space 1, Lot C4 and Lot C5 to accommodate 17 duplexes. The second part proposes to subdivide Lot 18 at the corner of Waterfall Drive and Portland Road to create an approximate six-acre parcel for future development of a 72-unit apartment building. Eighth Amendment, Park North Contract Zone, This amendment consolidates Lots 6 through 15 located in the northeast portion of the parcel, the previously proposed right-of-way for Minor Park Road, the previously proposed right-of-way for approximately 1,100 feet of Don Marie Drive, and the parcel formerly containing Stormwater Detention Area 2. The purpose of this change is to accommodate the outsale of approximately 27.52 acres to Maine State Department of Defense. As a result of this outsale, it is necessary to reconfigure the roadway alignments and intersection of Don Marie Drive and East View Parkway. Additionally, former Lot 5 and parcel containing Stormwater Detention Area 1 are proposed to be adjusted. In conjunction with these changes, the applicant is proposing to subdivide lots 2 through 4 to create six lots. Staff recommends approval of the above subdivision amendments based on the actions by the planning board from 2008 to present. I move to open the public hearing.
I have a second on that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Minton, to open a public hearing on the Park North and Cascade Contract Zone subdivision amendments. Are there any comments to my right? Are there any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to come forward to speak on this matter? Please state your name and address for the record.
Elliot Chamberlain, Scarborough, Maine. Just stating for the record that we have never felt the amendments that we made were amendments to the contract zone. Changes to the plan, we never felt got to the level of calling it an amendment to the contract zone. We've always felt amendments to the contract zone, which we have made since we first received it. We've been to the councils and asked for that permission and either got them or did not get them. Never have we come to the council for making a plan change. I've always related to this the same as what happens in the city. If somebody wants to change a use on a parcel, they have to come to the city to get a zone change. If they subdivide a lot, they don't come to the council. I relate it exactly the same way. Kevin has, I'm not sure if agreed or disagreed with me, but felt it was necessary with what was said, and correct me if I'm wrong, what was said in your own zoning ordinance, that any amendment to a contract zone needs to come before the council? I don't disagree with that statement. I just disagree with a lot-line change is an actual amendment to the contract zone.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any additional public comments? Seeing none. Councilor Doyle, do you have a motion? Are you -- you weren't raising your hand just now. Come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue.
Would you please speak into the microphone?
I will, Mayor. Thank you. Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue. If you read, and I understand what Elliot Chamberlain just said, in reading state statutes and various documents, it does say that certain things can be done through planning board authority and not have to come to council. So, I believe that is what has occurred with these subdivisions and all of that. And I have seen it in the state statutes written that way. Now, Tim Murphy may be able to clarify where I'm talking about, but I have seen that it is -- and also, prior to this, when I brought lawsuit against the Cut Street here, the Maine Municipal Association said the authoritative body for the city of Saco, because we have one, is the planning board. And only when that is done like a contract zone that it comes to a council, but they are the authoritative body. They're making a lot of decisions that never come before this council. There are divisions made and all of that. So, to have just this one set of rules applied to this contract zone, though I'm guessing some of the other stuff, I don't understand why it has to come before the council for approval. Because the planning board does subdivisions all the time. So, why this one specific contracts individual has to go through this whole process when the municipal has already spoken? And if you would like a copy of it, I can send you a copy. Bob Hamlin gave it to me, and it was part of the lawsuit. So, you can look at it and see that the planning board was very clear that they're the authoritative body. So, though I fight against the other, I fight in favor of not having to go through this process. Thank you.
Any others who wish to step forward to speak on this matter? Are there any others who wish to come forward to speak on this matter? Thank you. Councilor Doyle, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading of Park North and Cascade Contract Zones subdivision amendments on August 12, 2019.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilor Minton. I have a motion by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Minton, to close the public hearing. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. Next up is Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on an opinion from City Attorney Murphy, the city council has requested review of all subdivision amendments in the Park North and Cascade Contract Zones. Recently, the planning board conditionally approved the re-subdivision of 4 Cascade Road to create one additional lot. The applicant, Amari Holdings, has also submitted a site plan application for construction of a 6,000-square-foot structure for 3,000 square foot of business use and 3,000 square foot of medical office space. The applicant is pending further review by the planning board of the site plan application until the council has issued its decision on this subdivision amendment, which is considered the ninth amendment to the overall Park North and Cascade's subdivision plan. The exhibits include items that reference all subdivision amendments and are included for the council's reference. Staff recommends approval of this amendment to the Cascade Contract Zone as conditionally approved under subdivision review by the planning board. I move to open the public hearing.
Second. So, Councilor Doyle has made the motion. Councilor Minton has seconded that motion to open a public hearing on the Cascade Contract Zone subdivision amendment. Are there any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. Does anyone wish to come forward to speak on the Contract Zone subdivision amendment? If you would please state your name and address into the microphone.
Mr. Mayor, William Thompson, representing Nate Libby, who's the applicant, who does live in Saco.
Yes, sir.
I'm his representative from the engineering company, and I'm here, just wanted to introduce myself. If you have questions during your process, I would be available. I'm working on the lot that he needs to have subdivided permission through this.
So, you're speaking in favor of this amendment?
That's correct. Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, any questions? Nope. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So, anyone else who wish to come forward to speak on this matter? Mr. Roach, if you please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Roach, 18 Pines Road. Let me sneak an audit comment in. RKO is probably -- process and internal audit is part of their contract, so just look at that. Overall, out there, I'm in support of Nate Libby and what he wants to do out there, make that front corner lot. We need to encourage, whether it be Park North or Cascades, anything and all, commercial. That's -- let's get back to the spirit of what we're trying to do out there. We also have the opportunity zone that's going to expire at the end of the year now. So, just a heads up on that unless something changes in the federal government. So, when Reedy Seafood opens up out there, it's going to be a whole new look and ballgame out there. We're going to, the traffic studies will be done by then, hopefully by then. And I just encourage whatever you decide to do on all amendments that, you know, come back to the focus of, of, of commercial, of commercial development. Any developer, if they're not doing something that you had dictated to, I mean, you do have the, you know, you can do escrows, you can bring it up again on agenda, you guys could keep doing it over and over again if you want, but what we look for out in the, out in the development and private sector is certainty, is this is being treated, you know, each person coming to the same project and role is treated, you know, with the same courtesies, the same criticisms, the same, you know, process as everyone else. So anyway, just want to advocate for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any others who wish to come forward and make a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If everybody else is done speaking, could we have Attorney Murphy come before us and explain his interpretation as to why? Sorry, I've never actually seen his opinion on this.
Attorney Murphy, would you please step forward?
Close the public hearing piece first.
We could close the public hearing.
That's fine.
And he can still speak, and certainly he can speak when we come to the final vote, too.
Stand the motion.
So if there are no other people speaking, let's close the public hearing. Councilor Doyle, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and further move to schedule the final reading of Cascade Contract Zone subdivision amendment for August 12, 2019.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Minton, to close the public hearing. Any comments to my right? Councilor Doyle?
Thank you. I believe the catalyst for what we're seeing here tonight is based upon our charter, and that's subsection 230, 1405, under contract zoning. And you want to look at section H, it says, "Status of Amendments. Amendments to the zoning map and this charter made under this section may be amended or appealed by the City Council."
Right.
So when we talk about the authoritative body, we are the authoritative body. So I think that's why the large number of amendments are coming before this council. As the city administrator has told us before, he was not involved in the process up until these started coming to light. And I think that's the reason why some of these are here. And I'm just trying to answer the questions that have been brought up by some folks here tonight, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Johnston?
I would agree with Councilor Doyle's assessment, but I still would like to hear it in legal terms from.
Yep. So let's close the public hearing. Any other comments?
This will be the time to do it.
Oh, this is the time to do it. Okay, excuse me.
Before you vote.
Attorney Murphy, please, come forward.
Good evening. So what I would say is, and I was just commenting with Elliot about this, up until, I would say about six months ago, I wasn't aware of all the changes going on out at Park North. My impression when I looked at them, based on the charter, was, hey, these actually all should have been approved by you, the City Council. Having said that, I also can say, in my impression, Mr. Chamberlain was following the rules as they were laid out in the document and as it was explained to him. And Peter Morelli was at some length, when he drafted the contract zone, to put in language that said, "No, Elliot just goes to the Planning Board and gets these approved." So I think the applicant acted in good faith. It was, I want to say, March or April, someone brought this to me and said, "Well, what do you think?" And that's when it first, you know, it first, I think, came to light that perhaps Peter, that that may have been a short changing of your authorities as the, as the final arbiter under contract zoning. So I think coming to you now to bless these is a wise act and an appropriate act, and I think one you should, you should make, because the commercial repercussions of not doing it, I think, would be too unpleasant to consider. And also, I think by doing this, you're reasserting your role as the arbiter, the final arbiter of what are appropriate changes in contract zones. But I really do fundamentally looked at this and said, "Hey, I think we've made a mistake. It was unintentional. I think the party acted in good faith, so to be punitive, I think, is inappropriate and counterproductive to the global interests of the city." But, so that's, Nathan, kind of how I got to the analysis I got to. I do think the point that was made earlier is correct. I think you're the, ultimately, the decider on a.
I would agree. I mean, I had caught this probably about six years ago, and I probably should have raised it with you versus city staff, but thank you.
And the planning staff brought it to my attention and said, "Well," and perhaps it was the rate of changes that were going on, that finally someone said, "Do we need to bring this to the council?" I said, "Yeah, I think so. I think, I think so." So I leave it to your discretion, but I think in this case, you would be wise to, to give these due and fair consideration. And my impression was the applicant has always acted in good faith. We may disagree on some of the policy decisions, but they were following the rules laid out as they understood them by, by city staff. So I hope that helps.
Anything else for the city solicitor to my left? No? To my right, anything?
Thank you.
Attorney Murphy, thank you very much.
Sure.
So are we all set for a vote? Does anyone have any more comments to my right? Any more comments to my left? Councilor Johnston, on the motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. We're all the way up to item D. Councilor Doyle, you have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge Number 1597 has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. Permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93.2. Staff recommends approval. I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Doyle, seconded by Councilor Gay, to open a public hearing on, oh, checks. On the, oh, Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge's special entertainment permit. Are there any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
What are we voting on?
Opening the public.
Opening the public hearing on the, on the, on the Elks.
I have something to talk forward to, the application.
Special entertainment permit. So you have.
I might as well say it now, because I'm going to say it after the public hearing. When are we voting on this? Late, middle of August? We're going to be voting on an expired application. But the permit expires 8/8/2019.
There you go. So we have to, this is, do we need a public hearing and a final, do we need a final reading?
This is a one.
It's a one.
This is a one and done.
It's a one-up deal.
We'd be approving it concurrent.
Approving it tonight.
You're closing the public hearing, and you're granting the renewal application.
For them to have a permit for three weeks?
No.
Yep.
It's concurrent with their liquor license.
Concurrent with the liquor license.
But Elks's permit expires 8/8/2019. That's very direct.
So they're getting it done ahead of time.
Right.
So they're getting it done ahead of time rather than behind.
Right.
They're going to.
This would be active 8/8/19. Concurrent with their new liquor license, is how it works.
The new license becomes active on the date the old license expires. And if we don't do it now.
Because we don't have the old license next to here, you can't tell.
If we don't do it now, their license will have expired. If we do it now, then when their license, current license expires, the new license then begun, takes effect.
I see. I don't know what that means.
We don't meet daily, so we cannot approve something that's going to take effect that day. We approve it before that day.
Yes, we'll approve it, but then it's also going to expire in three weeks.
No. The old one expires in three weeks. That's why they need the new one approved.
Date page 7/1/19. This isn't last year's.
Clark, if he can clarify.
Excuse me, Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can you come forward to clarify the meaning of, of the date associated with expiration?
So these folks do currently have a special entertainment permit that is in effect until August 8. Like a lot of civil groups, civic groups, they do have some turnover in their office. They're pretty much volunteers that do this. And so from time to time, when the torch gets passed to someone new who's responsible for filing this, it's not always filed perhaps as early as it should be. This was filed July 1, and it is meant to be in place, as you have said, when the current permit expires. The city clerk gave this to me for this evening, to be signed by you folks after you take your vote, if you vote to approve it.
Right. So it is.
Okay, because usually we don't see, they were so far behind in the permitting process that they're trying to make up?
No, no. They weren't tremendously behind, but they, they should have, they perhaps should have filed a little bit earlier.
So because typically we see more like a year out, like the permit expires in a year.
With these, a lot of times, it's within a month or so, maybe a little bit more, maybe six weeks, something like that.
Okay.
Does that answer?
I guess, as long as they can still have their services.
They will still have their services.
That's what I'm trying to make sure they're covered.
If this does pass, they'll have their services. And what we're.
Still waiting to open the public hearing.
So we need to open the public hearing. I have a motion by Councilor Doyle. Do I have a second on opening a public hearing?
That was Councilor Gay.
Sorry, Councilor Gay made that motion?
Yes, I did.
Have we had a?
He seconded the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doyle.
Right.
Oh, and then I was going to say, any comments?
Yep.
And.
I made a comment.
And you made a comment. Any other comments to my right? Any other comments, any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion to open the public hearing passes 7-0. Does anyone wish to come forward to speak on this matter? Is this pertaining to the matter, or are you?
It is. Barbara Coleman, 45B Stockman Avenue.
Thanks.
Councilor Archer, good catch. There's an error on the form.
Right.
And that is your problem. He is being very clear. If you look, it says, "The permit expires 8/8/2019 unless revoked by the municipal officials." So this should say 8/8/2020.
It'd be $230 for a month permit, less than a month.
Look at your documentation, people, in your council packet, and you will see, Councilor Archer is correct. You're voting on a motion that is not even, you're reading something that is not going to be able to be put into effect because your documentation is illegal, because it's not dated properly. So it needs to go back to the city clerk and have them rewrite this application.
They don't need to do that, Barbara.
Why not?
Excuse me, Mr. Sutherland.
Mr. Sutherland, I'm sorry, yes, you do. If you ask Mr. Murphy, he would say that contracts are based on dates and signatures.
Right.
Mr., you've got two, a paralegal and attorney. You just don't change dates.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Anything to add to that?
I just want to prove that Mr. Archer is correct.
All right, fine. Mr. Rankin, you made a clear statement. Do you stand by that statement?
I do.
We have a, we have a city clerk who has certifications associated with this. Mr. Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to change the 2019 to 2020.
Okay, do I have a second on that amendment?
Second.
So Councilor Archer has, I'm sorry, Councilor Doyle has made an amendment to change the date to August 8, 2020. It's been seconded by Councilor Gay. Mr. Rankin, is that in any way a violation of the law?
I don't. Well, I think the substantial process is certainly being followed, as well. It was apparently taken by the clerk's office and perhaps very likely by myself, as I passed this forward to the clerk. I may have written 19 on this. The intention is that they do have one active and in place as of right now. And so this, the intention of this is to establish entertainment permit for them for the next.
Fine, thank you. So that amendment is in order. Any comments on the amendment to my right? Councilor Archer?
Is that just a simple cross out of 2019? You circle it originally and make it 2020? Okay, I'm fine with it then.
Any comments to my left? Seeing none. This is to.
Vote on the amendment to change the date.
This is to amend the, this is to amend the application to change the date. So, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
So currently, the form reads that this will run until August 8, 2020. And why the motion, and this is a part of the discussion, to vote on a motion to open the public hearing. So.
We've already opened it.
We did. Oh, this is, this has opened the public hearing. Excuse me.
You already opened it.
Yep. Okay, any other comments? Thank you. So, Councilor Doyle, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the City Council grant the renewal application submitted by Bitterford Saco Elks Lodge Number 1597 for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. Move to approve the order.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
So Councilor Doyle has made the motion to close the public hearing. On this motion as amended, and Councilor Gay has seconded that motion. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Thank you. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to close the public hearing passes 7-0. And we get to the first reading of the school amendment. Right. So the school amendment. So the school amendment. Counselor Johnston?
City council endeavors to make an amendment in section 6.06 of the charter. The section pertains to city council action on the municipal budget. The amendment will allow council to vote on the global school budget instead of on each cost center. Amendments to Charter, Section 6.06, reading through the exhibit, strike through represents language to be deleted, while underline represents new language. Be it ordered that the city council approve the first reading of the Saco City Charter Amendment, Number 3, School Budget, dated July 15th, 2019, and further move to schedule a public hearing for August 12th, 2019, before a vote to add to the November referendum. Second.
Do I have a second? Counselor Johnston has made a motion. Counselor Minton has seconded that motion.
Sorry, Smart.
And that is to change the city charter, Section 6.06, to, to reduce the verbiage associated with spent, money spent on any budgetary category established under law. It may not otherwise amend programs or programming, personnel, or any other category which authority is reserved to the school board, replacing it with proposed to be allocated to the school department. Comments to my right? Comments to my left? Seeing none. Mr. Mayor? Yeah?
So I'm just looking at Title 20, 20A, Section 2307.
Yeah.
And that is the school budgets. And it talks under subsection 2. In charter municipalities where the municipal charter confers upon a municipal council or other municipal legislative body the authority to determine the total amount of the school budget, and confers upon the school committee or school board the authority to direct the expenditure of those funds for school purposes, the municipal council or other municipal legislative bodies shall determine the total amount of the school budget to be submitted to the budget validation referendum. And the school committee or school board shall determine the allocation of the approved school budget among the cost centers, of the cost center summary budget format. So that is the exact language that we were talking about before.
Yes.
Which I think it was brought up before in the workshop, that it already works that way, essentially the way the charter is now. We make, we can say, hey, we want you to take it out of whatever cost centers you want, but we've seen through experience that doesn't happen. The school board has the ability to move funds around and direct the budget as they see fit. We only get to really say what the number is. So I think, you know, in looking at that, to do a charter amendment, another charter amendment, I don't think would, I, I'm concerned about continuing to do the charter piecemeal additional changes. I'd like to look at maybe a charter revision committee. You know, we've looked at the zoning revision issue. We did a comprehensive plan committee look back. You know, it just seems right that if we're looking at all these things, we look at a charter commission committee as well.
Thank you. Any other comments to my right? Counselor Archer?
Yeah, just from what Counsel Doyle just mentioned, brought up a question of mine. I believe we were talking with our city attorney one time, it's about...
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Speak into the microphone.
About if you have too many charter changes, when does it become substantiate enough to actually be, need to go to that level? I just don't remember. I know we've done quite a few charter changes within the last year or two, and I'm just looking for reconfirming about that, what that original statement was. So it sounds, it looks like seven?
We've done six.
Six. And I do remember, Tim, you had mentioned like it's more about substantiative, it's more about the, not necessarily the quantity, but really about the quantity. And I just can't remember if we're even approaching that issue yet.
Attorney Murphy?
Shows up to the meeting and he gets called.
They'll teach him to show up to the meeting.
There you go.
Determined to get your money's worth tonight, huh?
Wait till you see what's coming.
So I do remember giving that advice. And I'll remind that state law does not tell us exactly what is sufficient enough changes to warrant it be a charter commission versus charter changes that you handle. As you increase the volume, as you increase the range, you're more likely to, for it to be viewed as a revision requiring a commission. And that's when I mentioned to you, if at all possible, avoid that process. For this reason, you all were elected by the citizens to be the representative body. They felt you folks were the best placed to govern us. Not someone else who isn't sitting in your chair, but you. If you opt to establish a commission, you are divesting yourself of your authorities that you're entitled to, to other folks who may not be as well-versed on these issues, who may not be as interested in them, and who may not be as skilled. So I counsel you to hesitate to ever divest yourself of your rights under the charter. Incremental change is almost always best. Revolutions rarely go as well as people plan. I was just in France. I can attest to the pictures of violence I witnessed. Things start off well, but sometimes get out of hand. So yes, you can create commissions. That's up to the wisdom of all of you, but there are reasons to stay with, keep it within your own authorities.
And there are municipalities whose charters do not permit that.
Yeah, and, and there are some committees where they have to go to commissions. And I recall Justice Brennan, who was the Superior Court Justice up at, up in York, was involved with the town of York. And he would, he would remind us, young attorneys, of the amount of litigation that came out of the town of York, because they had a budget committee, they had a charter commission, and they had their town governance. And those three bodies were at war for years. So the attorneys made out like crazy. And he would say, "Tim," and you'd look at me, and he'd say, "Don't go down that road." So...
Counselor Archer, are you all set?
All set.
Any other questions for Attorney Murphy? Thank you very much. Any other comments? To my left? To my right? Counselor Minton?
We had suggested some edits in the workshop.
That's right.
Where do we stand with that? And I know Attorney Murphy was also going to be looking into the school board's attorney's interpretation of those edits.
So can we get those at the point of the second and final reading, or the public hearing?
The second and final reading will happen in the same day as the charter amendments are a two-meeting process.
Okay, it's a two-meeting process.
Setting the public hearing and then having the final vote after the public hearing. We will include those as part of the packet for, and those recommendations as part of the packet.
There'll be something that will be printed up for...
And as a recommended amendment, if so be.
For Counselor Archer, maybe the initial recommendation to make, and then to be seconded as an amendment to this. Is that permissible?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, Kevin, on language, if we look at the edit that's currently under 3B...
It'll have to be rather different, because you're looking at it from two different approaches. One is the school budget, the municipal budget, with how much you allocate to the schools, versus looking at the schools specifically and the cost centers. So I'm going to have to re-engineer a lot of that, Alan. I won't want to do it tonight.
I was just going to say, where the red language is right now, if the end of the red language you put in "or," the total amount proposed, continue with the blue language, you've pretty much accomplished what we were asking for by inserting four words.
He's writing it down. It's likely you'll see that verbiage. It's just that, it's nothing he's going to solidify this evening. So here we are with the first reading. Any other comments to my left? Any comments to my right? Counselor Archer?
Three words.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0. We'll be meeting and have a public hearing, and also a, a final motion and vote on this on August 12th. Administrative update.
Two quick items, and I just sent the email with those to the council. Transit Tomorrow survey, so the Portland Area Comprehensive Transit System, also known as PACS, in which Saco is a member of, they're looking to shape the future of public transportation in our region. Transportation leaders are creating a vision and investment plan for public transportation. There's a quick public survey. Tell us how you think public transportation in Southern Maine should look in the future. The link is transittomorrow.metroquest.com. And also, another item, opportunity to be a host family. The Greater Portland Council of Governments, GPCOG, is looking for ways to provide temporary housing for more than 200 asylum seekers now staying at the Portland Expo. That facility is only available until early August. So GPCOG is working with faith-based groups and is setting, also setting up a system that will allow families in the region to temporarily host asylum seekers in their homes. So if anybody in Saco is interested in hosting a family, please email hosthomes@gpcog.org. And I've also included a link to an interesting Portland Press Herald article on the topic. So that'll be up on administrative update tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments on my right? Counselor Doyle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple. First...
On the administrative update?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, is there any administrative update, comments, administrative update? No. We now are in council discussion. Counselor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. The Dyer Library is having their giant annual book sale, July 20th through the 29th. And I just want to also say that Saco Main Street, July 27th is the 10th Annual Classic Car Show. We also have the Adirondack Chairs downtown. If everybody hasn't seen those, or has seen those, those are auctioned off at the end of the year, or end of the summer. I own three of them. I've been able to auction my way to get some of those. And then also Thursdays, for now until I believe August 15th, is Music in the Parking Lot at the Dyer Library Saco Museum, so thank you.
Also, the Greek Festival is the 19th, I think is the 19th, 20th, 21st. Exactly. Any, Counselor Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, have you got an update on the 112 bypass? I didn't see anything in the paper yet.
I was supposed to, I'll look into it. I don't have anything for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else to my right? Anything to my left? Counselor Smart?
Thank you. Since this is the night for me recusing myself, I just wanted to state in public before we went into executive session that I will be recusing myself from the second listed item on the executive session.
Thank you. And Counselor Copeland, I believe you indicated you...
I just wanted to thank the city administrator for talking about housing for the asylum seekers. That was going to be my thing to talk about tonight, and I'm really proud that we live in the city that we do, and I encourage people to open their homes if they are able.
Thank you. Any additional comments to my left? No. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to enter executive session.
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6(c), Credit Enhancement Agreement Terms and Conditions, c, Discussion of Real Estate Matter Regarding Pre-K, and c, Parks and Recreation Real Estate Matter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion by Counselor Minton, second by Counselor Doyle, to enter executive session for three matters. Any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Smart?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Gay?
Yes.
And Counselor Archer?
Yes.
We are now 7-0. We are now in executive session.[1294.66]
We're back. I'd like to have a motion to exit executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to exit the executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056, seats Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405-6C.
Thank you very much. And do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Minter and seconded by Councilor Doyle to exit executive session. Any comments? My right? Any to my left? Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Minter?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Archer?
Yes.
That motion passes six-zero. Is there any report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405-6C, Credit Enhancement Agreement, Terms and Conditions, no report. Section C, Discussion of Real Estate Matter Regarding Pre-K, no report. Section C, Parks and Recreation Real Estate Matter. The Saco City Council authorizes the city administrator to purchase 12 School Street in Saco, Maine for $240,000 for a Parks and Recreation teen center.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Minter and seconded by Councilor Johnston on the acquisition of a structure at 12 Middle Street.
It's not 12 School Street. 12 School Street.
At 12 School Street. So, any comments to my right? Any comments to my left? Councilor Copeland?
I would just like to say that this is probably one of the best decisions that we have made and that our community will be all the better for it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Minter?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
The motion to acquire the structure passes six-zero.
Move to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilor Minter and seconded by Councilor Copeland. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minter?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
That motion passes six-zero. We are adjourned. At 11:20. (laughter) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)